It doesn't emit any greenhouse gases. Often glass can be landfilled with less environmental impact than recycling it. Lastly, the global manufacturing trend of lightweighting packaging by using lighter and less materials has caused the recycling ton to evolve. It takes ninety percent more plastic bottles to make a ton than it did fifteen years ago, increasing collection and processing costs. Today, household recycling collections are contaminated with unrecyclable items that can't be processed. A recent survey found that sixty-eight point three million Americans will place an item into a recycling container even if they aren't sure it's recyclable. What impact does this have? Unrecyclable materials increase sorting time, damage recycling equipment, and decrease the value of commodities. Collections are further contaminated by materials that haven't been properly cleaned before being recycled. However, the popularity of recycling continues to grow. An overwhelming ninety percent of US residents say they want recycling and are willing to pay for it. Maintaining the momentum recycling has gained is more than a matter of economics. Recycling conserves natural resources, saves energy, and reduces pollution. It's simply the right thing to do. To meet public demand, municipalities and republic services must engineer a shift in the current recycling model that is mutually beneficial for everyone. Through collaboration, we can create solutions to make recycling sustainable for our communities. What can you do today? Sort smarter, proactively educate your community, learn what materials can and can't be recycled in your community before placing an item in your bin. Make sure all of their items are empty, clean, and dry before placing them into your recycling bins. And finally, encourage them to share recycling knowledge with others. Not everyone is aware of what can be recycled or how it's done. Together, we can change the way we recycle to ensure that recycling remains sustainable for a better world and a brighter future for our blue planet. Learn more at republicservices.com/recyclingreimagined. Recycling has-
Okay, so really our message is to clean up recycling. And again, it's just by sorting smart and empty, clean, and dry, and then don't bag it. It needs to be loose. So, we're gonna be working with Jamie on some educational material out to the public. So if you guys have any questions, feel free to answer them at this time.
We appreciate you coming and giving us that educational piece. I know things like contamination, I don't think we realized, I mean twenty-five percent is a pretty high number for our community. And that some people think since the item's recyclable, if they just put it in the bin, that it's fine. In fact, we spoke with someone at Environmental Quality Commission who said, "Oh, I didn't realize that." They have a ketchup bottle, you put it in, you don't think about maybe rinsing it. So, you would think that we would, but maybe that's just not the mentality or the thinking. So, we appreciate you bringing that to us. And the timing is also good because with the bins that we had in different places around the community, the drop-off bins going away recently, realizing that that's a nationwide trend, and it's not just something that's a Jefferson City issue of not having those bins, and that kind of the reasons behind that which you're able to explain. So people certainly can still take the recyclables to the drop-off facilities at New World or Federal International. Or if they're inside the city limits, they have the single-stream bins. But the key is using that sort smarter thinking of empty, clean, and dry. So, we appreciate that, and maybe thinking before they even get something, kind of pre-cycling necessarily, where if you get a sack as you're out shopping, do you really need that sack in the first place? Maybe bring a reusable bag so you're not even having to worry about that where it ends up. But kind of thinking through the item before you even buy it and then where it ends up in the end, and the whole cycle of what that is to our city and to our environment, and seeing the measures that other cities and communities are taking such as not having straws or not using bags or having bag fees or those kind of things. You mentioned not using bags. Did you mean plastic bags is what you meant?
Yeah, like, yeah. The Walmart bags, grocery store bags, those are not recyclable.
Inside the bin?
Right. They're not recyclable at all. So you don't need to put your recyclables in them and then put that in a bin. So, no bags.
Sure. And some grocery stores collect those, have collection points, but maybe thinking twice before you even take those. And are there other questions of council members on this item? Well, keep us posted as the, as new initiatives happen and what we can do, and maybe how our recycling rate hopefully is getting better, the contamination rate, we want that to go down. Certainly doesn't help anyone if we make the effort to recycle and then have a contaminated load. So, appreciate you all being here tonight. And why don't I, yes, Jamie?
Just real quick, sorry, Monty. Here in the next few months, you're gonna see from Planning and Protective Services, we'll be updating our website to include, you know, these educational videos that we showed tonight, along with doing some more like Facebook or media outreach to get this recycling information out there to the public, and along with other educational materials. So you'll be seeing a lot more information coming out from us soon.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let me get a picture of you all so I can at least post it and remind everybody that it's empty, clean, dry, right? Okay, smile. Okay, thank you very much. And we will do our part and challenge those in our wards to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item five, we have a public hearing. And item A, creation of the School Street Local District. Mrs. Donaldson.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri establishing a local historic district to be named the School Street Local Historic District and adoption of associated building design requirements.
All right, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Lady Barron. This mayor will establish a local historic district for the School Street area and adopt building design guidelines for the area. Chapter eight of the city code authorizes the creation of local historic-
Start over, lose all the money that's been invested and the time and the energy and the study. And the study that Jenny and these people have been doing is not coming from just Jenny. She may be, have her race, but she's working with people of all races. There's all people of all races living in that area that are telling their story. They're interviewing people from all areas, from that area. And so I just, I have to speak the truth here and let everybody know what is really going on. Because I know, because I'm working with them, and I'm working with a lot of other organizations throughout this group, and I can't let this go without sharing the information. And other people are gonna come and speak, people that live in these areas, you know? And like I said, it disheartens me to see a divide of people that I care about. And I care about that church. I was a member of that church for twenty-some years. But the bottom line is the church is not at risk. But, and there's ways of working with the church and including the church's history in other areas, because it's gonna be in that area, and just like Second Christian Church. That history will be included all along that area as we can build together and work together. And we can do that. And we're doing it. The people are doing it and working with organizations that are willing to work with us.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody would like to come speak and, welcome.
I have a presentation slide that needs to be put up. Okay, my name is Glover Brown. I'm the executive director of the Historic Foot in Lafayette Street District. It's just kind of amazing to me to hear all this rhetoric tonight. We also met with Ms. Smith and her husband over a year and a half ago, talking about this area. We too wanted to be included in the conversations with this area, and we were excluded. One of the things that, if you know anything about me, I think all of you have received a copy of a document that I wrote called the Bold New Plan. And I think some of you were at the dedication on Lafayette Street of the memorial plaque that we had installed to not let the memory of Lafayette Street and the Foot District ever be forgotten. If you will remember, in my plan, we talked about enlarging the district ourselves. We were gonna do it from Jackson to Clark Avenue, from McCarty to Franklin Street, which was where Lafayette Street originally ended before they built the high school. The slide that you see on the screen now was our attempt to present to the neighborhood an economic development package. This was brought to the forefront because we looked at the history of Lafayette Street and the commercial district that was destroyed. And so my brother and I, being the executive directors of the organization, we decided that as part of our plan, we were gonna put back an economic development package for the neighborhood, the area, and the city as a whole. I heard Mrs. Smith talk about that if these homes were lost, you were going to lose property taxes. Well, I think if you look at this structure here, this is gonna bring a lot of tax dollars into the city also. And we tried to pick out a structure that was not demonstratively just horrible to the community. We felt we wanted to do something that gives a sense like a bank. It looks solid, it's gonna be there for a while, and it's not futuristic. It's something that would enhance the community that we're gonna put it in. Now, I have met with an economic development team out of St. Louis, and they were sorry that they couldn't be here tonight. But they did give me the instructions to say that we are still in talks with potential developers to provide this facade here to that area. We have spoken to two of the previous presidents of Lincoln University. They have endorsed this project, stating that they felt that this would be an economic development package that would benefit the university through providing jobs to its students, providing housing, providing shopping, all within walking distance of the campus. Now, again, we've met with Mr. and Mrs. Smith. I think we've met with a large number of the council members to share what our plans were for this. And like Quinn Chapel, we wanted to be inclusive in the talks about developing this district, and we were excluded. And so this is where I'm having a problem. Now, along with Quinn Chapel, I don't know, could I ask that the screen be put back up showing the boundaries? If you look at the map there, at the very top is McCarty Street, and you see where they, oops, where they did the indentation to include those homes there on the right side of Lafayette Street. Well, now, if they wanted to talk about the historic significance of the area, if they would have continued east on McCarty Street, three more houses, they would have picked up a house from a very noted civil rights activist that was in the turn of the century, and it was a Reverend, I believe it was Sloan, don't quote me on that, but he was very prominent in the black community and to do the civil rights activities back in the early nineteen hundreds and the late eighteen hundreds. Now, again, like Quinn Chapel, that wasn't included in their historic district. Now, if you go back to the testimony that was given, all of these homes are in the floodplain. Yes, they are looking to try to save their investments because of the fifty percent rule. But I agree with Reverend Gould that I think that this should either be put on the informal calendar or just stopped altogether and let them come back and start over, and be more inclusive of what the real purpose of the historic district should be. We at the Friends of Lafayette Street were not opposed to historic district by any stretch of the imagination. We would like for them to go back, rethink it, and then include everybody that should be included in that thought process. So, that's it for me.
Any questions? Councilman Rayther?
If you were to be included in with this structure, would you be able to build, I guess, would you be able to build the same structure if it was a historic district?
From what I understand from conversations with the potential developers, when you have a historic district, it's like an onion. You're adding more layers to the development process. Now, I just read articles in the paper about this new development that the city is wanting to plan at the MSP area. You know this is, it takes a considerable amount of time and effort to plan these things. Right now, as I said, we spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Smith about a year and a half ago, and we shared with them this plan, and knowing that we had to go through these processes. So, like Reverend Gould said, we've met with the mayor, we've met with Mr. and Mrs. Smith and Reverend Gould, and we've tried to come to some kind of an understanding where that we could all make this a happy medium. Now, I think a historic district, when you look at it, you have historic buildings, and then you have historic history. Now, the historic buildings of what was really the heart of the black community is gone and can never be brought back. So what I'm saying is that as part of the executive director of the Friends of Lafayette Street, it has always been my intention to bring an economic development package back to that community. Now, myself, my family, my brother, we have nothing, we have not a penny invested, not a penny to gain. We are bringing this back to the community as part of what we feel was what should have been done in the sixties. And so what we're doing now is we're offering this to the community. And I think if you look at any area, and I think the trend now is for the neighborhood plans, I think Mr. and Mrs. Smith should be delighted that they have a facade like this where they can walk to the corner and go have dinner, or where they can go shop and buy a gallon of milk, whatever they need. And so we're not trying to impede upon the historic nature that they want to put there. But like Reverend Gould said, let's just call a spade a spade. Let's not look at this facade of we're trying to save the historic nature of the community. These people are trying to save their investment dollars. So, if we really could ask for the council, we feel that it either should be put on the informal calendar and let some more time go by to where all the sides can have conversation, or kill it right off the bat and let them go back and start over. So, that's where I'm at.
Further questions? Councilwoman Ward?
Hi, Mr. Brown. How are you? Are you a current landowner or property owner in this proposed district?
No, I am not.
Okay, so it won't affect you at this point?
It won't affect me, but it will affect the memories of what my mother and father- It won't affect me, but it will affect the memories of what my mother and father gave their lives up for in trying to have something, as I've said in a previous news article, as a result of urban renewal, we not only lost our legacy, our livelihood, we lost our homes. And so, this area, School Street area, is the last vestige of property that can be developed by what was then, I guess you would say, descendants of the original black community.
So, how many, how many of those historic structures there on Lafayette would you have to tear down in order to build new development there?
Well, 408, which is owned by the city, and we think that that would resolve one of the issues that the city has about what to do with 408. And so, the other one is the building on the corner, which is now an apartment building. And we've already had some preliminary discussions with the owners of that building, and they have agreed to continue discussions about us purchasing that building for our project. And then, the building immediately to the west, we've talked to the owners there. So, we're only looking at the 408 property and two buildings, one on the corner, and then the one immediately adjacent to that. That's it.
So, three historic structures that contribute to a historic neighborhood?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So, it would be three historic structures that contribute to an already intact historic neighborhood?
Well, I think if you look at their application, the two buildings that we're looking at that are not owned by the city were not included as historic buildings in their application.
The one on the corner of Lafayette and...
And McCarty.
Which is that historic duplex?
You know, it's a...
I believe it's on there.
It's the, it's, I think they have six apartments there?
Yeah, I think it has two front doors or, yeah.
Okay. And then, the one immediately to the west of that. Now, we've already...
They're within that boundary line.
Right. And we've already talked to the owners of those properties, and they have agreed to continue talks on selling those properties for the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker? Mixed. Let's see, we just did opposition. So, we just did opposition, so our next speaker, are you, our next speaker in support? I forgot to clarify that. In support? We're trying to alternate. Okay, that's fine. Come on up.
A little bit of both. A little bit of both. I really, really am glad and I am pleased that we will...
Could you give us your name for the record?
First of all, my name is Sheila Logan Sims. I am a lifelong resident of Jefferson, the city of Jefferson. I watched them tear down my grandma Logan's house and put her up on Jackson Street. I watched them tear down my dad's shoe shop, and all in the name of urban renewal, that all of this was supposed to have been put back together. I watched them move Quinn Chapel from here to there to wherever they wanted it to be. See, I remember when Quinn Chapel used to, was there, they had tent meetings. Yeah, lifelong resident of Jefferson City. I watched Quinn Chapel build their church there. I watched them do the renovation. They have done everything. Now, you know what? They're talking about, I talked to a young lady earlier before the meeting, and she was talking about the, it was all about the edifice. You could look at Quinn Chapel's edifice if they hadn't torn it down, okay? The city tore it down to put up that run, that exit up off of Lafayette Street onto the highway. So, it's not their fault. So, I think somewhere in the, in their, that they're presenting, that there needs to be an addendum, okay, an addendum, to include Quinn Chapel and that says, it's not their fault that they had to move. That we could've looked at the historical value of their edifice if it hadn't been torn down for the improvement of the city of Jefferson. So, I think, I think we need to, just need to take a breath, okay? Just like, I didn't know if I'm a four or a guest, I just had something to say. Just say something, you know? I think you take a deep breath, ladies and gentlemen, and, and, ah, breathe, you know? Breathing is fundamental, okay? Breathing is fundamental. Understand that there's a reason why Quinn Chapel, they keep talking about the edifice business of it, you know? Addendum, we are including them because we took their church, the edifice. We took the edifice, but you cannot take the church. The church is the people, okay? And the people have remained the same. They have moved according to the improvement of the city of Jefferson. That's not their fault. Do not punish them for that. Nobody needs to have a spanking tonight, okay? We don't need to spank anybody, okay? Just understand that somewhere there needs to be an addendum that says, yes, we are going to include them because their edifice was torn down for the improvement of the city of Jefferson. And allow them to be included in that. Allow them to do that. And that's, you know, I just want everybody, you know, to be on the same page. And sometimes, like I said, it takes a deep breath. Everybody breathe. Ah, let it out. Good things in, bad stuff out, okay? Breathe, you know, and, and, be careful about the I mean my thing going on, okay? Watch out I mean my, okay? Because I mean my will get you in trouble every time. All we're saying is, all I'm saying, I don't know what everybody else is saying, because I'm just standing by myself, but all I'm saying is that allow Quinn Chapel, addendum. They make addendums all the time. How many addendums do we have to the Constitution? Hello? A bunch, a bunch. Because somebody changed the balance, somebody said, oops, we forgot that. Oops. We have a oops. Hi, Madam President, we have a oops. Madam, I made you, Terry, I just made you the president. Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have, we have a oops going on. We have a oops, and we can fix a oops without anybody's feelings being hurt, you know? Just say, get off, get off of it, that business about the structure is not, is not in line with the other historical structures. Because if, now, if the city of Jefferson had gone through all the challenges of lifting up that church and putting it on that other corner, guess what? Their structure would've been, their structure, they tell me my time is up, you know, I could talk forever, but anyway, addendum.
Thank you very much.
Addendum.
Are y'all breathing?
Breathe.
All right. Okay, so, next speaker, please. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Turgeon, members of the city council. Excuse me, my name is Mary Shantz. I live at 1928 Hazleton. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Your HPC considered the application for the School Street Local Historic District. We held a public informational meeting and a public hearing about the proposal. And after due consideration, the Historic Preservation Commission approved the application for the local historic district. As this was a first-time process for, for the city and for us certainly, we took special care to assure that the application was given full consideration. We did deliberate, thoughtful consideration, and we felt the importance of our role. This was the first time, this was a very important step. After the process had been completed, the Historic Preservation Commission felt that the application had indeed met, in fact, more than met, the requirements to be approved as our very first local historic district and voted to approve the application. I'm sure that each one of the members of the commission had their own special reason for, you know, listening to the testimony and their thoughts, things that stuck out to them, but I just wanted to share with you a few of the things that stuck out to me in the process. First off was the extent of the history of the people, of the neighborhood, of the contribution of that neighborhood to the community, not just to the community, but in many times to the state of Missouri and to our nation from the people who live there. Second was the testimony of many of the people that came to testify in support of the application, who had actually lived there as children, lived in that neighborhood, some had returned, and talked about the significance of that neighborhood and what it had meant to them. And then, third, that impressed me, were two reports that had been commissioned by the city council, one in 1992 and one in 1995 by the Urbana Group. One looking at South Side and one looking at East Side. And in both reports, throughout the reports, they were, they were looking, I believe, just to determine structures that would meet the definition for a historic, National Historical Register. But throughout those reports, the Urbana Group said to the city of Jefferson a few things that I, that struck me with this. One was that the national, being on the National Register does not protect a historic resource, that a local historic district is the only way really to protect the historic neighborhood. They talked a little bit about the review, the design review, but then they went on and they gave some examples, and I believe the 1992 report, where they talked about examples of, had Jefferson City at the time had some kind of a local historic district or established something, some of the neighborhoods that we drive by every day wouldn't look the way they do today. And they gave specific examples of the 900 block of, on the east side of Jefferson Street, Madison Street, and then on East Elm, where infill was buildings that were just not necessarily historic in nature. So, that impressed me, but most, I think mostly on those reports, the thing that impressed me was that a local designation is the only way to protect the character of a historic neighborhood, and they specifically cited School Street as an excellent example of an area which probably does not retain enough integrity to be included in the National Register, but which retains the charming character which the city may want to protect. So, this was in 1990, that was out of the 1995 report. This is a special first local historic district. I think the standard for this application, the quality of the research in the application has set a good standard from which we can continue in the future. It will pave a way for many other new districts in the city to rise up. And with that, I would encourage you to support the application for the School Street Local Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the commission as well, its volunteers, and we appreciate all your time on that. Were there any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Thank you very much for being here. I understand this has been a grueling process. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there that night. I tried to get there, but I had other conflicts and I couldn't get there, so I appreciate the work. But I have gone, the staff has done a great job of sending us a lot of documentation, so I've tried to spend a lot of time on this issue. And just had a couple of questions. I've gone through the minutes of that meeting, and I think it started with staff giving their presentation, which I think Mr. Barron indicated that their recommendation at the end of the process. I think we showed there was a 4-2 vote. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Did one member not vote?
I believe one member, either we're one member short or one member was not there that night. Jamie, I have to look to you.
She left, because it shows seven members there, so...
Oh, the chair does not vote, unless it's a tie. I'm sorry, duh.
The folks that testified, Ms. Smith opened it up, there was a question raised in regard to the FEMA issue. Have you all been able to dig into that? Because I know we've gotten direction both ways, we've got correspondence. In regard to that issue, have you been able to...
The Historic Preservation Commission has not. I know the staff testified that night, and I believe subsequently I have seen communications between FEMA and the applicant and the city about the, what would happen if the local historic designation was given in terms of would it, would the 50% rule no longer apply? But I'm not an expert on that, so, Mr. Fitzwater, I really can't answer the question, other than to say, there has been communication with both the applicant and the city that has come back and forth between them and FEMA.
There was a reference made tonight that there's a waiver process. Has anybody, and, does that have to be done after the historic district, or could they apply for the waiver now?
Again, you're outside of my expertise. I apologize. I know there's somebody here tonight that can answer that question.
And then, Mr. Hernandez raised the issue in regard to the 50% substantial improvement rule, which, which we've been aware of. Ms. Bedham, who's kind of led the, kind of some of the discussions and talked about, and Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Bedham talked about the fact that there are not a lot of owner-occupied properties in that area.
Area.
I think he quoted 80%, she quoted 20, 80% were not, so it'd be 20% were owner-occupied, 25% is what Ms. Bedham said. Did that raise any comment from the...
It did not. To my recollection, there was, we heard those statistics, but it did not raise any particular alarm or concern.
And then, Dr. Gould was there, this meeting was on May the 1st, and the comment that they reflected in the minutes was, she had requested the matter be put on hold so that more people could weigh into the matter to see what was feasible for the area. Was that taken into consideration as part of the...
Well, certainly, the commission could have, I suppose, done that, but there was a motion made and seconded that the district be approved, and the motion passed.
So, my point is, the request she made tonight was made on May the 1st, and now we're at council two months later, addressing basically the same request.
Right. And I have to be honest with you, I don't know for certain, but I'm not certain that it is within the Historic Preservation Commission's purview to make a determination like that. I think that would be something that would be more for the city council unless the applicant withdrew their application. Again, I'm not, no, I'm not an attorney, but it just, yeah, it just seems like our role was to look at the historic aspect of this application, and did it meet the criteria? I believe there are 10 or 11 criteria that have to be met. And because your Historic Preservation Commission are people that have expertise and knowledge on historic issues, and so they were kind of, I think the Historic Preservation Commission gets that job to determine, is there a historic value in what's before us? Just like on demolitions, when we make a decision on, can an applicant for a demolition of a home over 100 years? We look at the historic nature, make a determination. And so, I think that what we were looking at was, was the criteria met that the applicant was asked to meet, and in the opinion of the majority of the members, it was.
So, you don't have a mechanism, I mean, we have informal calendar. I realize you don't have, as structured a mechanism. And then, it's, it also quotes, as Mr. Brown indicated, he had asked for the same thing to delay the decision until more folks could be brought into the decision-making process. So, again, now, a couple of months later, we're carrying the same, same request from Mr. Brown. And then, it quotes some other folks who were both for and against. And then, getting back to the staff recommendation, with the 4 to 2 vote, meaning there's only a one-vote swing really, I mean, if one vote would've went the other way, it would've been a 3 to 3. That did not raise any concern with the commission, with all the testimony, with the staff recommendation that maybe a delay would be worthwhile?
It really, it did not come up. When the application, when the vote was taken and it was approved, we moved on. I think that, you know, you always wish that the decisions were unanimous. I mean, that, that's a perfect world. It wasn't. So, but no, there was not. We didn't, we didn't like come back and say, well, maybe we should rethink this, or maybe we should, because the vote was 4 to 2. On demolition applications, we will have not major, excuse me, not unanimous decisions sometimes.
Usually, those are, sometimes it's good to have folks on the opposite side.
That's true.
As I, Mary, I appreciate, I'm not trying to grill you, I'm just trying to get to the bottom, because there's obviously a big difference of opinion on how folks think we ought to proceed, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we have the information.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilwoman Ward?
I'd like to have our city councilor kind of respond to some of those questions. I know that the Historic Preservation Commission on another... I know that the Historic Preservation Commission, on another topic, was it 408 came to you guys? You had, they, that was their desire to...
Delay.
Delay it. And they were instructed by...
Could not.
...councilor, that they, that they could not do that by their, their bylaws and their ordinance. So, with something like this, would that have been, I think it was just their take that they do have to vote on issues that do come to them when they do.
Right. The, the code, the chapter eight, 8047, sub-four, requires that the, that the Historic Preservation Commission actually take up, only the applicant is eligible to ask for a continuance in writing. And so, absent that, that request in writing from the applicant to, to, for a continuance, the board really, or the commission doesn't have any authority to grant a continuance on their own motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so our next speaker. Welcome.
My name's Perry Douglas, and I'm a member of that little church on the foot. I first came to Jefferson City in 1947. The first thing my parents did was take my brother and I over on Miller Street and join Quinn Chapel AME Church. It bewilders me that we, that even the thought of us not being included in a historic movement such as this. It's a little modern church at 415, but if you look on the roof, that's people came from the church on the foot down at 529. If you go in our doors, there's stained glass windows. They came from that little church on the foot at 529 Lafayette. If you look a little further, you'll see columns that came from the front porch of the little church on the foot. We don't want to be forgotten historically. I'm in no way opposed to historic movements, but I am opposed to my church being overlooked or forgotten. All we want to do is to be a part of a historic movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. My name is Joslyn King, 901 Roland Court, Jefferson City, Missouri. Hello to all of you. This is getting to be emotional here. My family has been a part of this community since 1907 day. Both of my parents at Lincoln University a long time, I went to Jeff City High School. I left for a long time and came back. Quinn Chapel's always been here. When I first came to town, I was asked if that was where I'm going to church. Unfortunately, I said no, only because I'm a part of a different denomination, but I've heard so many wonderful things about Quinn Chapel over the years. When I first saw the notice of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was at that meeting last month, why did I go? It was talking about making everything green space? You know, this neighborhood, green space? Now, I have to give it to you, I love the greenway system going through the town. I walk my dog a mile a day, but we don't need any more parkland and green space and greenway right here. We need this community and the people, and there are some people who don't have things quite as pleasant as they should be because they're in the floodplain. You know, there are certain things that they cannot do with their homes. If, you know, it really gets bad and they try to move, they can't really get out of the home what they put into the home. And this could be my family, because when we first moved here, we were on Lafayette, right in the floodplain. But it was just due to other circumstances, logistics, that we had to move, and we moved just right around the corner to Roland Court. So, that's why I was here. I did not want to see just gradually green space develop, which is very conceivable if these homeowners have to live with the floodplain rule and not be able to get their investment of what they've done, the money that's needed to make repairs. There are so many of us who were victimized by the windstorms that came through here, tore up my backyard, another neighbor tore the roof off, and this had nothing to do with the floodplain. When it comes to getting money to fix these things, that's where it comes in. So I would like to see the neighborhood spared for that reason and included in the historic district. If this proceeds now and Quinn Chapel is not included, I don't look that, at that as overlook, I don't look at that as abandonment, because when you are a part of this community, you have a love for everything in it, Lincoln University, Quinn Chapel, and everything else, okay? I look at it as a building stone, okay? If we can't get the whole thing right now, let's start with what we got, okay? Ms. Smith, you know, put a lot of work into this, and it may not have been the same thoughts of everybody else, but there is a thing where it helps us, and it helps us all, to have this historic district. And I don't want any more green space, that's number one. Number two, my father, the Lutheran pastor, so I understand some other things too. I understand when one door opens, or closes rather, another door can open. If the door closes with this chapter, with only this chapter of the historic district, the door is not closed. There is another door that will open. Ask and it shall be given, seek and ye shall find, knock and the door will be open unto you, and you know sometimes we have to knock and knock and knock. We have to be creative, we have to find new resources, but the door is not closed. And one other little comment I wanted to make. For 20 years, my father was pastor at a church I bet nobody's heard of in here, but it was just about 20 miles down the road, Pilgrim Lutheran Church in Freedom, Missouri. Freedom is like a little suburb of Lynn that was named Freedom right after the Civil War. They are this year celebrating 150 years. They've been through many obstacles, they've been through growth, they've been through growing pains. But they not only celebrated 150 years, but it was something very unusual, I could not believe. I was not a part of the celebration there, by the way, but the members there who still know us kept us informed. On May 27th, the weekend of Memorial Day, the editorial page, I've never seen anything like this, it was a big color cartoon picture of the church. Pilgrim Lutheran Church celebrates 150 years. Who has ever seen that, okay? And it told a bit about its history. I bring this out because that church has never been a part of a historic district per se, but it is still historical. Quinn Chapel will always be the historical pinnacle of this community. I can appreciate a lot of buildings built after the Civil War, and I have a greater appreciation for those built during and before the Civil War and survived. And I'm, you know, I'm just talk about that because, you know, I mean, that's just something close to my heart. And Quinn is part of this community, so Quinn is a part of our love, everybody in this But if this is approved, this historical district as it is, to help some of our brothers and sisters in this community, to help their living, and in my estimation, keep away the green space.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't want to cut anyone off, but I know we've gone beyond, a little well beyond, so I want to make sure we keep it moving.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please? Thank you. And if council has any questions, just, I'll, I'll let you all just raise your hand or speak up if you do. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Cheryl Lynn Woodruff, and I don't want to be redundant, but I do want to say that I am a lifelong member of Jefferson City. I have been in the community 74 years. I am one of the two parishioners that have been at all three locations. We first, I had to move, as we've heard over and over tonight, from Miller Street. I was 12 when we moved to 529 Lafayette, and we would still be there had it not been for the relocation to our new facility. All I want to say tonight is that we are not opposed to this School Street historical district, but we would like our heritage, our legacy, to be included in this district. We want to continue to be recognized for the work that we have done in the community, the spiritual work we've done, the, just to be included. We're not opposed to the district that has been approved, not approved, but proposed, but please, just give us some consideration and just take time to look at our perspective, please.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and the city council, my name is Tammy Beschen, and I live at 728 Deer Creek Road in Jefferson City. I am also the president of the Historic City of Jefferson. I sent by email a letter, which each of you should have received, including the mayor, about the thoughts from Historic City of Jefferson, and so you should have those in your possession, but I would like to just reiterate a section of that, that I wrote to you. The Historic City of Jefferson supports the creation of this local historic district, and in particular, I ask that you consider the following. Those who own property in this area want this designation, including the design guidelines, and 75, and that is shown because 75% of these owners, including, including the mayor on behalf of 408 Lafayette Street with the city, owned, owned, signed the petitions for such. Secondly, the written and verbal comments submitted by the public for the Historic Preservation Commission in May, and the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in June, and what I've heard tonight overwhelmingly support this designation. The question may be the boundaries, but the support for a district like this, for this district in particular, is there from the public. The city holds certified local government, or CLG, status, which is created to help communities save the irreplaceable historic character of places, a certification that requires local government to demonstrate their commitment to historic, their commitment to historic preservation in order to be eligible for certain funding, along with other benefits. And fourth, the city staff had already been directed to revise the local historic district criteria, to make the process easier for applications and the acceptance of applications. So to go through this process has been very tedious and very draining and very resource, eating up a lot of resources to even get to this point with the current regulations that are in place with the city code right now. So with those considerations, I would ask that you vote in favor of Bill 2018-021 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I won't be long. My name is Lori Sims, and I am another lifelong member of Quinn Chapel, and I am on the Board of Trustees for the building, for the church. My parents moved here in 1958, and while I was born here, I never experienced the business district on Lafayette that you've heard other people talk about, because by the time I was old enough to know what was going on, it was gone. There were hotels, there were grocery stores, I don't know where Mr. Perry went and Ms. Sherry, they could tell you all of the things that were in that very vibrant, striving district. It's all gone. It was supposed to come back after urban renewal, that was the agreement the city made, and the only business that is still there is Carolyn Johnson's barber and beauty shop, because her father threatened to sue the city if they didn't give it back. Everything that I've heard today preserves buildings, not history. And while it is very important that we find a way to help these property owners, I feel for them being in a floodplain with all the restrictions that are upon them, nothing that I've heard said that there's any guarantee that this district will help them. The applicants say that this is going to revitalize the area, but nobody has said how. Nobody has spoken to any economic development, just preserving these buildings and calling it a historic district. And I will just be honest, because I don't know how to do anything but be blunt, given the history of Jefferson City, when it comes to the historic black neighborhoods, I have no confidence that this will actually benefit us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Any other speakers this evening?
Madam Mayor and council, I've been in every public hearing we've had here, and I've heard all of the comments all along, and I've been in, as Mr. Brown says, conversations with him for some time, and we met at least on one occasion at Quinn Chapel. And it's apparent that we're not all going to agree with what was discussed in those meetings, but the first time I heard the word inclusion was at the P&amp;Z meeting last month. I did hear that people were being excluded, and I was at a meeting at Quinn Chapel with the mayor and Mr. Sanders, and we primarily talked about the economic development plan. And there were two developers there from Ferguson that were brought in to talk about that. And that has been the focus of all the discussions in the past. It hasn't been about, please include us. So I just want to say, that's my recollection, and some of you were there, at least at that meeting, and if you attended the three meetings that were held in this building, you didn't hear the word inclusion, you heard, stop it, let's think it over, I've got a plan, I want to present to the city. That's what we heard up until the last meeting at P&amp;Z. So does Jefferson City want a local historic district? That, you're going to decide that tonight. The opponents of the historic district don't really want this district. And failure... And failure, failure to approve this district will, in my opinion, seriously damage any chances for a future historic district in the city. I did a quick survey and called around today. I excluded Kansas City and St. Louis. But Springfield has three local historic districts, like the one that's being proposed here. Cape Girardeau has one. Popular Bluff has one. And Columbia has five such districts to protect historic buildings. If you, you really can't, if you would prefer to have a plaque down there next to the tennis courts versus buildings that actually would be maintained and keep the integrity of, of a neighborhood that once existed, then maybe a plaque's all we're going to get out of this down the road. But that's not what I want. The School Street request meets all requirements set out in the city ordinances, sections 844 to 846, to form a local historic district. And if you exclude the five properties owned by government, 90% of the property owners signed the petition. The HPC approved the historic district, as you heard, and approved the design guidelines. Planning and zoning was invited to completely review the process again last month, and they took a neutral stance, because they didn't sound like they really wanted to make a decision on it. So there's been a lot of opposition at every step of the way in this process, even before we began to gather signatures. But a local historic district has many benefits, and this is about property and it's about preservation. But most of the School Street properties are in the floodplain, and it's hard to maintain and preserve such properties in America. So I invite you to read your own city forms, number 200 and 204, which explain how the federal, state, and city governments impose rules on private property owners and floodplains. In paragraph one, it clearly states the rules are a hidden cost that actually reduces the value of the structures. And no owner in this district bought any of these properties knowing any of that at all before they bought the property. And in Form Number 200, it clearly states this information is actually mostly learned after the fact by a property owner, after they buy the property. One commissioner at the P&amp;Z meeting said he felt the applicants were trying to circumvent federal FEMA rules, but that's not really true. In 2008, there's a, there's a 2008 FEMA publication entitled Floodplane Management Requirements That Provide Relief For Historic Structures. It sets out the rules, it's not vague, and in your packet on May 29th, the city administrator sent a letter to the state Historic District Preservation Officer requesting clarification on this point. Can a certified local government, such as Jefferson City, allow relief as described in the 2008 FEMA publication I just cited? So we've talked with city, state, and FEMA officials since the P&amp;Z meeting. No one rule will fit all of these properties. I hope to work, if, if you approve this, I hope to work on a couple of test cases. But it's not a one-size-fits-all. And one approach that's described in the FEMA rule is that a property owner will apply for a variance, he will go to your floodplain manager, and he will say, I want to do this, and he will also go to the HPC and show his plans. Two separate processes. So if we approve a School Street local historic district, it's a good first step, and additional districts could be billed off of that. So I hope we can get this done.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Brown. Live at 714 Clark Avenue.
And so those are things I think we can look at, because I, I think it's evident after going through this one, that there might, may be things that could be made better for the future. So I would look to city staff to give us some guidance on what those things could be. Looking at dollars, and, and we knew that we had that, that looming over us, and so we knew that we had to act. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't have had to have the vote and have the five to five and have the mayor act to break that tie. So we've had other things that make this unique. But the fact that it's unique, I think, can also make it better in the long run, but it also makes it harder as we're moving through this. It's not, there is not a clear path, there's not a clear vision, but I think the clearest vision is, I, I don't hear anyone saying they want to see green space. So out of the five-five vote to demolish that particular property, it went to Historic Preservation Commission. We knew that that allowed a 60-day extension. We knew that this would get it out in the media, it would get it out to the public. Maybe somebody would want to buy that property. It's not necessarily for sale, it was for sale. We didn't have interested buyers. So we're just trying to revive interest that maybe somebody would want to, whether it's a neighbor, a citizen, a property owner who already lives there, somebody who could convince somebody of the, the value of buying that property, or perhaps, as, as Mr. Brown mentioned, a developer would want to come in and make that purchase. So at the meeting at Quinn Chapel, that was something I really stressed, is the importance of, please help find a buyer. If there's a buyer and there's an interested party, then perhaps we could talk to council, and maybe we would be able to work with somebody, because we know we have a bill or an invoice that could be hanging over us, and if there's interest in, in buying that so that it wouldn't become a green space. So all that being said, ultimately, finding someone to buy it would, would be a solution so that it wouldn't be green space. That's the background, after hearing all the testimony this evening, and knowing that there's no clear consensus that among the property owners and really among the community, if I were asked to, to vote, if it were again a split five to five, I want to let council know that I would vote no for moving forward with this historic designation at this time. And I want to make clear that that does not mean I don't value the amount of time that went into planning this historic district. I just feel that it needs, I would not want to move forward with something that is, that doesn't have any consensus at this time. Even planning and zoning did not give any direction or recommendation, they remain neutral on their recommendation. So looking at solutions, I want to be open to council's suggestions this evening. Perhaps a suggestion could be made to city staff that at the next meeting, a resolution could come forward that would give staff some direction on how to proceed on historic preservation efforts, to have a positive impact on the preservation plan, to preserve areas in our community, and give staff that direction so they know that it is a priority for the city council. Then all, and also updating the process for historic designation. Since it is updated, it's been many years, in fact decades, since it was in, first put in place, and that the city is lacking tools to make it successful, and it makes it a burden on property owners. I think if we knew that ahead of time, I, I think that, that's what has brought that out. So I wouldn't want to say, well, you shouldn't have tried in the first place. I think that's what has come out of this period, so the effort hasn't, certainly not been lost. And in the end, the question that Jenny asked at the podium, Mrs. Smith, can they change, can the city change the boundaries to include that? And I think that's something council would want to know as well. So I would pose the question to staff if we can change the boundaries, and also like to open it up and, and not, and, and hear from council. So Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. I have, I have a question actually of Reverend Gold, if that's all right, or of, or of anyone from Quinn Chapel. It's, it's specific to the issue that you just mentioned. I'll just, I'll just pose the question, if, if anyone knows, they can answer. Does Quinn Chapel and the parking lots behind it, I'm, I'm looking at the aerial shot, is that all one single parcel?
The church and the parking lot? So we collectively purchased eight parcels. So it is not just one parcel, there were literally eight different parcels.
So they were not unified into a single parcel?
Right.
After purchase? Does the, does the building itself sit on one single parcel?
There were four on the front, on the, on the, there were four homes there on the front side of Lafayette, and more homes on the middle side, and then there were like, so part of the parking lot was like vacant, like. So like I said, we, we ended up purchasing eight different parcels of land, contracted person, I said no, but that was like on the other side of the parking lot, didn't really care about that. One of which the city owned and the city actually did.
Thank you. And just to make sure one more time, even through all the development process, and the building currently sits across four different parcels?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the building specifically sits across four, actually technically the building probably sits across five, because there was, uh, there, there was a building there on the corner of Miller and Lafayette as well. Probably 701, I think. So the building actually sits across five pieces of property.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Well, I guess, if, first, if we could get a response from council on your question in regard to, can they amend the application, or does it start over? I know Mr. Melman responded, when I raised a question in regard to, could they delay, could the commission delay it that night, and the answer was no, do they have the ability, or do we have the ability to ask them to amend it after the fact?
And especially since that request is coming from the applicant. So what would be that answer? Mr. Melman?
Which one shall I address first?
But either one.
Okay. Um, procedurally, the, the rules that govern these types of applications in front of the Historic Preservation Commission appear to also, also govern the city council. And so I would say the same thing, that the applicant has a right to a continuance, but the city council does not have the authority to grant a continuance on its own motion. And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to keep up here as we go along, so if I, if I've said something different to you previously, I apologize. However, in our charter, the charter includes provisions that bills may be placed on the informal calendar. Charter authority trumps city code, and so the, the city council, the bill sponsor's ability to place something on the informal calendar is unfettered, even in light of these, of this rule contained in the code. So, so the bill sponsor can still place it on the informal calendar. As far as amending the district, I have previously, and I continue to take a position, that once the application is received by the city, that the, that the application can't be amended, particularly, particularly by the city council.
You're saying cannot?
Cannot be amended.
Okay.
Um, the city council, the, the city code sets this up to be a property owner-driven application initiated by property owners, and does not give the city, the city council or the city authority to start this process. And so therefore, the city council corollarily should not be able to have the ability to amend the application itself. And so that, that's why I take this position. I will say, this is a, it's a, the procedures are, are really, really poorly set forth in the, in the local historic district ordinance. It's, it's, it's really a disservice to, to the applicants and to the city under the rules that we're working on. And so this is a, this is a, not a direct answer out of the city code, but it's an interpretation that I have to make based on what I believe the city code is trying to do.
So what does city code directly say?
City code says 75% of, 75% of the property owners in a proposed district have to approve, have to sign on to a petition to, 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 to establish a historic district.
Is there any wording there about amending?
There is no wording about amending.
So if there's not, then what prohibits it?
So once again, this, this is a hole in the code, and so I'm, I'm forced to make an interpretation. My interpretation is that when someone signs a petition that is, that is circulated by a petitioner, they are approving what is contained within that petition at the time that they signed it. And so if a property is added, that is a property that was not in front of a applicant as part of the proposed district when they signed the application, and you cannot make an assumption that the person would have signed that application with, if that property was included. Now, that's, it could be reasonable to infer that, but legally, you can't make that inference.
Well, that makes sense if they signed for it.
That makes an assumption on, on a property owner, on a property owner's signatory, that, that they would have signed it had it included that additional property.
Okay. And I, I know we have two hands, I saw Prather before, and then Hensley, so why don't we do that?
So if we amended to add them pending their approval for the application, their percentage, would that work?
Well, it, it, it addresses one part of the problem, it doesn't address the second part of the problem, the other 22 property owners who signed the petition in a particular shape. And, and that's what I was trying to get at. You cannot, you cannot make the assumption that those property owners would have signed that petition had the shape been different.
And if they did sign a petition to change it?
Then, then we would be, then we would be...
So basically, what you're saying is, if we did something like that, approved it pending both Quinn Chapel's approval and the, the other owners signing the, the petition to amend, it would be okay?
It's, there's no authority in the code for that, but I, I, it kind of, it passes the test. It tasks, it passes the kind of fundamental fairness test. So, yeah, I think the city council could, could do that.
Councilman Hensley, and then Fitzwater?
Thank you. The signing of the petition, does that go beyond simply agreeing to have your discrete parcel included in the district? Or does it also grant some power over the final shape of the district? I mean, does, does my signing that also give me permission to attempt to exclude other people from being within the district who would like to be? Don't my property rights, like, stop at the boundaries of my property?
Correct. It's, it, the idea is that this is a collective application, and, and you can only judge the application on, on, on the application that was in front of the voter or the, the signer at the time he signed it. That's, that's kind of the central idea, and if that could be used to exclude other people, like, I guess that's a way you can frame it. But the, the way, the way I, I'm forcing myself to look at it is that you're essentially, you're asking a property owner to answer a question. Do you want to be part of this historic district that looks like this? And when they sign it, they say yes. And that, that question did not include, can we add some additional properties as well?
Isn't the central que, I'm sorry to jump in. Isn't the central question, though, for each property owner, whether they consent to having their property encumbered by the rules that go along with being a historic district?
I, I think it's a central question, I don't know if it's the only question.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Fitzwater?
My question relates to Councilman Prather's. If, if we cannot infer that a property owner added, we'd have to go back and ask everyone's opinion, can we also not infer that the Historic Preservation Commission would approve that application being changed? Since it was a four-two vote, I mean, it's going to look much different to the two that voted against it, and maybe to one other person.
Um, that's, that's, that's a great question. Ultimately, the city council's the ultimate decision-maker, and the, and the, the historic preservation is, is essentially a recommending body. And so I, I think ultimately, the city council's decision on this would, would, would be the final decision, that you wouldn't have to refer it back to the HPC to, to take action. I, I can tell you point-blank, this is, this is going on, trying to interpret what is in a very sparse code, and could leave us to open to exposure for challenge on either side. You know, it's, there's, there's no real clear direction on, on what the right answer is.
Councilman Hesse?
I want to pick up where Councilman Hensley left off, though. Just for clarity's sake, I'm, I'm looking at the application, and I'm looking at the form that each individual property owner signs. And that form talks about designation, require 75%. It talks about that it would enact building design standards contained within the code here. But I guess I'm curious, are the property hunters at any point in time shown a map to say, these are the 28 properties? Are they told? Like, what is the boundaries? Are they simply asked, we would like you to be included, would you... Are they simply asked, we would like you to be included, would you sign off on this? Because I would argue that if they're just asked if they want to be included in a historic district, then that person's not signing based off of anything in front of them that dictates they're one of twenty-eight properties. Um, because the process, it seems to be the process could be fluid and would be designed in case there's a twenty-ninth that comes along. Um, in fact, I do believe we started with twenty-seven and then came to the conclusion there actually was a twenty-eighth. And I think the applicant simply went and got one extra signature to hit that threshold. They didn't go out and get everybody else to sign once more to say, well, we were wrong, there was twenty-eighth.
I believe, I believe that was pre-application or, or at least, or at least, um, pre-final submittal. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know the process and, and, um, and it is, is a, is a theory that makes sense. I, I recognize that. Um, I, I, I don't think that that is the correct answer, that if they weren't shown a map, that they should have been. Um, I, I think that is part of the question of not only do you want to have, be a part of a zone, but here's what the zone is.
Yeah.
Mr. Kroll?
I'm sorry, my follow-up broke quick would just be if, if after a historic district is created and you, you head down the path years down the road, what's the process then to add additional properties to that district if there is said process?
You'd have to infer a process. A, a static district doesn't make any sense under state, uh, under state zoning law. Um, and this is, it's a land use law. What I would suggest is that the code needs to get amended and added because it's just, it's a giant hole in the code.
So, a path here could be the approval of the district as it stands before us with the recognition or we pass a motion, resolution, whatever it takes to say, if the desire of the council is to add, uh, the Quinn Chapel property. I looked it up on the GIS map based off of Councilman Hensley's questions, and it looks like on the GIS map that it's listed as one parcel. Now, maybe it was broken up more before, but it shows as one now, um, that we could change our code or create that process immediately. And now, it's not immediate answer tonight, but it could give us the chance to add them by a process we determine in the future here to reach some sort of consensus and resolution this evening. Would that be something you think is plausible or are we playing with fire?
No, I think that'd be fine. I think that'd be well within the city council's, uh, ability to control.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Kroll?
I was just going to say, the, um, the public hearing, though, does specify the number of lots and has the, um, actual district identified. All the public notices for the various public hearings and announcements.
That's, that's correct.
Uh, Councilman Graham, did you have your hand up?
I guess my question is for Ms. Smith. Uh, going back to the original application, uh, did that, did that application have a drawing of a map or how was that application set up?
Councilman Graham, I should probably have Mrs. Smith come to the speaker, and I probably should have done that with Mrs. Gould earlier too, because if with, um, could you come to the, the mic?
So, we're talking about the original application and how it was sent out to the property owners. How was that sent out? Was it sent out as a drawing of a map or was it just saying that these properties to this street? How was the application set up?
Prior to, uh, we, beginning the process, we had a, a neighborhood meeting and we had maps and we showed the residents the maps. And, uh, when we developed all the parts of the application and began collecting signatures, um, we emailed to those applicants that we had emailed addresses for, which were most of the residents or most of the property owners, um, the, the map that was emailed. And when we went to get signatures personally, because every one of those had to be notarized and most of them are individual app, uh, signature pages, uh, we gave them a copy of the design guidelines. We did not show them a copy of the map, but, um, I think they were all aware of the, of the boundaries, but not spec, you know, I don't think anybody asked specifics. They had seen the maps, but I didn't, I didn't show them a copy of them every time they got a signature.
Mr. Kroll?
I was just going to say, I'm looking at the application and page seventy, I just lost it. Page seventy looks like it has a school district historic map that outlines in blue what appear to be what we've been talking about. So, unless I'm not understanding that correctly, it looks like there was a, a map area designated.
Yes, there was, but I think the bigger question is that what you're looking at, that application was submitted after we had collected all the signatures. So, I had to have that in.
Okay.
You know, when they, when they signed the, the application. And they didn't, they didn't always have a phys, I did not put a physical map in front of them. It was kind of understood what the, the boundaries were. But the bigger thing were, was the design guidelines that were spelled out, because that's, that's the bigger question for the property owners.
So, you're saying, Mr. Melman, that a yes vote would, oh, and I apologize, is anything else for Kathy? Or Jenny? Oh, my gosh. Sorry. Um, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Hensley, Councilman Hensley.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, this is to follow up on something I think you said during your closing rebuttal a little while ago, that if we could find a way to get, uh, Quinn Chapel's property into this, uh, that you would not object to that.
Not at all.
Just to follow up on that, if we had to, uh, delay briefly for a number of weeks to figure out the correct language to make that happen and to get it done, would that be a problem for you?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. So, if, uh, Councilman Graham?
So, would that delay be on the informal calendar or how would that be delayed?
I, I suppose so, yeah.
For the informal calendar? Okay.
Councilman Mahal, uh, Fitzwater? Sorry.
Got a follow-up. I'm not picking on our council, but with the comments you made in regard to the changing the size of this and with the city being a landowner, owner in that district, if, well, one, I'm trying to get an update on where 408 stands right now, so that's kind of the first part of the question. Second part, if we become the disgruntled landowner because of some significant negative consequence to the city, does that pose any problems for us until we get these kind of things ironed out? So, I guess the first part is what's the current status? I mean, I know we got turned down on the demolition, you know, what, what's the current status and what's the impact if we become the disgruntled landowner at some point if things are changed from what we got back?
Um, I have to refer to Mr. Sanders on this, current status of, of 408. Um, I guess, I guess, I'm, sorry if I'm being dense, but I, I, disgruntled by whom?
Well, if, if we go ahead and approve an expanded district that, as you indicated, I mean, it could come back from the commission and we disagree with them and change the size of it and say, you know, thank you for your work. I'm guessing if they were to come back with a two against, two four, four against, we wouldn't even be in this discussion, so we probably wouldn't have overruled them. But if we go ahead and, and it sets up and then someone on council raises the issue later because there's a significant consequence on that property, do we have legal ground to stand on by changing it mid-process without kind of doing the due diligence that has been suggested?
It's, it would certainly, it would certainly cause an opportunity for, for the appearance of risk. Um, and, and just to kind of expand on your question, if I may, um, you may ask yourself, why is, why is the city attorney being so timid here? And, and I recognize that I am, but in the, in the area of land use law, um, particularly as it relates to procedures, um, if you get the procedures wrong, more often than not, the courts will invalidate your actions. That is, that is the penalty for getting these types of things wrong in many, many cases. And so, that is, eh, that is where a conservative approach is, 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 I'm forced to adopt is because if you get it wrong, a court can say, no, you did it wrong and it doesn't count. Um, you know, start over or go away or whatever, you know, the, the result may be. And so, so that particular, um, process would, would, would introduce an element of risk.
Well, for the record, I appreciate cautious attorneys, because that's why we ask you the questions, so thank you.
Further, uh, questions or deliberation? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanders.
Uh, yes, uh, 408, uh, demolition request went aboard, uh, for, excuse me, it's late, definitely. Uh, went before the Historic Preservation Commission. They denied it. Uh, we exercised our right of appeal by sending a communication to the city clerk within thirty days. So, right now, it, it's standing where, uh, we did protect ourselves and being able to appeal their decision. Uh, we thought it was to be in the best interest since we don't know if we have to pay the money back, if there's interest in someone else buying it without restrictions of, of green space. There's just sort of too many things going on, uh, or possibilities to resolve that, so we thought it was best to sort of play it safe and bet on everything happening. And by exercising the, uh, the appeal process, that's one avenue that we have to explore down, down the way. So, we're, we're just sitting on it right now.
Thank you. And, uh, what I said earlier too about if it were a five-five that I would vote no, I want to change that and say if it were five-five, I would vote yes. If we were able to follow through with what Councilman Hussey outlined in far, as far as moving forward with that process of allowing the inclusion of the Quinn Chapel property. And I believe you said that would need to be placed on the informal calendar, so I'm not sure if council, uh, Councilwoman Ward?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think based upon what we've heard from the applicants and what we heard from Quinn Chapel, um, I would like as the sponsor of the bill to place it on the informal calendar so, um, we can look into how Quinn Chapel can be added to the historic district.
Okay, so there's been, uh, the bill has been placed on the informal calendar by the sponsor and, uh, Councilman Prather?
I just want a question, I have a question regarding who will be responsible for following up with the interested parties?
I guess, you know, does staff feel like they have direction or is a, is a formal motion necessary to, to work that out?
Direction would be great.
Okay.
So, I would make a, can I make this?
Yes, Councilman Hussey.
I would make a motion to ask or to direct staff to come up with a process to add properties to a historic district after the creation of that district.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Say it again?
Well, the, the motion would be to, to ask them to come up with a process to add properties to a historic district after the creation of said district.
After proposed, it's not after created.
Well, no, because I think that the path we have to take is that we actually have to create, we have to pass the application in front of us as it stands and then immediately take action to add an additional property, which would be the Quinn Chapel property. I don't think, based on legal counsel and the process, that we actually, I think we actually do a disservice to everybody if we just go around and amend it, because it sounds like if challenged, it's not going to stand up because of all that process. But it seems as though we can create some sort of a process to add additional properties to a district once it's created. Still don't agree.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Can we actually do that at this point or do we need to recreate all of the, for that to fit in? And do we have enough time to do that while this is on the impromptu calendar?
The, the, the big challenge in, in Mr. Barron or Mr. Sunny, uh, Mr. Sanders might be able to speak to this a little more, is that as a land use regulation, it would have to go through a P and Z process. So, I don't know how that calendars out, but it certainly adds, uh, a dimension to amend the text. Um, that would be...
Councilman Hussey?
And I guess it would add that I, in an ideal world, they line up where they can all happen, but it, but this gets the ball rolling and it, it delays the passage of this to make sure that we work in good faith on that process. Um, if it requires more time to get that amendment or that, that, that process in place to add additional properties to a district after its creation, at least we would take a few weeks here to figure out what that looks like. And that staff could come back to us at the next council meeting and a public forum or prior to to outline what that looks like so that, in this instance, the Quinn Chapel group, you know, congregation would have an understanding of what that's going to take and be clear about that process, um, before we took action tonight necessarily and then just said, trust us on the rest. I, I would prefer just to delay a few weeks here, work through some of those details and see if we can't, um, prove the good faith side on our, our part as a city council on this effort.
Point of parliamentary order? Um, the motion to, um, has the motion to, to, uh, to put on informal been acted on?
I don't think we need a motion, correct? Can the sponsor just place it on the informal?
As a sponsor, could, could, uh, could the sponsor have alternatively said a table into an indefinite period of time, which have the effect of not having a clock tick out?
I consulted Robert rules, uh, which are adopted in the city codes. Robert's rules indicates that a motion to postpone indefinitely effectively kills the, the bill.
Follow-up? Um, but then you can specify the time for which the bill is recalled.
Yes, you can postpone and, you can postpone to, postpone to a time certain, which is a, a similar but different motion.
And that time certain could be that times which, uh, other actions have occurred?
I think, yeah, I don't think it would have to be necessarily a, a, a date certain, but upon the happening of, of other events. Very good.
And I believe we had a motion, but we just needed some clarification.
Just a comment, I believe our informal will probably allow us, it's three meetings, I believe? Is it, because it's going to be at least four weeks, you know, how, how the days run. Our first meeting's not till the sixth of, uh, next month, so, so that would probably allow us to get to P and Z, I would, I would think. No?
May I please retract my motion?
Actually, there's a motion on the floor and, and the maker of the motion wishes to withdraw that. I will, the second.
No, I, I would, my understanding would be that there's no need for a retraction tonight. If in three weeks' time at our next meeting, we have clarity about that specific date and it, maybe it's October first before we're going to get everything done on this additional process, you could pull it off the floor then and then turn around and make your, your motion to postpone to that specified date at that point in time. But I think the informal takes care of us for this evening from where I sit.
I'm happy with that.
Okay. So, at this time, we have Councilman Hussey's motion. Do we need that repeated?
I have it.
Okay. Mrs. Donaldson will remind us of that motion.
Uh, motion to direct staff to develop a process to add properties after the creation of a historic district.
So, we have a motion in second and Mr. Kroll?
So, so Ryan, just for clarification, then, if I understand it right, we're going to be coming up with a new procedure, an amended procedure for a pending application. So, we'll have a procedure that happens after the fact. That is not the way I understand Mr. Hussey's direction, is that we would dispose of this particular bill, but have in mind a procedure to add already established districts. That's, that's what I unders, understand Mr. Hussey's, uh, motion to contemplate.
Yep. My motion cont, just so I'm clear, it contemplates that the current procedures specify how to create a district, but it seems as though our current... create a district, but it seems as though our current procedures might be silent on how you would add a property to said district as time evolved. And so that this direction would say, you know, this could be any district that gets defined somewhere else in the community of 40 properties, and then a few years later, there's an adjacent street that says it makes sense for us to also be a part of this, here's our historic quality. We don't have a process specifying how those properties would get added. And so that, if we can figure out a path to do that through a process, that's, I guess that's what I'm directing, not to throw everything out and start new.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Just to comment on that, it just seems like an awkward process for something that is so important to our city, to be saying, hey, we found a flaw, let's work on it, we move along down the road, next time we find a flaw. I mean, you made the comment a little while ago that we had an antiquated process, and maybe it's time to look at the entire process and not just piecemeal it, because I understood it the same way Mr. Kroll did, that we were hustling this through so we could take care of this application. Now, I understand it has, can be used for future applications, but it just seems like we're piecemealing this thing to make it happen. That concerns me.
Mr. Sanders?
We were going to put this on the consent agenda, but we had some paperwork issues. We are going to put it on the consent agenda for the August meeting. We have been notified and we've negotiated with the state Historic Preservation Office that we are 98, 99% sure we're going to be getting two Historic Preservation Grants. I alluded to this in an email a while back, but we are waiting on DNR to give us the paperwork to put on the consent agenda. One of those projects is to develop a Historic Preservation Plan, which includes looking at our codes and revising our ordinances. It involves a lot of public participation. It is a $50,000 project, of which $25,000 is the grant money. We also have identified sources of funds in this year's budget due to employee cost savings that we would use for this grant. We have to be done with the grant, I believe, at the end of August, so hopefully we would, I mean, I'm just offering a solution to all the issues we have with the code. But this Historic Preservation Plan would also help set goals and objectives, working with Historic Preservation Commission, working with citizens, working with council, and everybody like that, to develop a Historic Preservation Plan, which also gives us guidance on ordinances and address these types of issues we have here. We applied for this grant, I believe, last year, knowing that we had issues with Historic Preservation Code. So I'd like to throw that out as something to consider, too.
I think we could do both.
We'd be duplicating efforts, piecemealing stuff right now versus later on next year.
I think this is sort of, in a way, a short-term benefit, and then what you're talking is a little more long-term for the future that would require a little more work and public input and grant approval, but this would get us through to solve this situation now, and then we'll certainly look at it and evaluate and probably make even more changes, so it'd be more streamlined for the future. I kind of, I would suggest we do both. So we have the motion in second, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so I think we, before we move on to item six, we'll take a five-minute break. Does that sound good? I do want to thank the Boy Scouts who have sat through this.
Got a good lesson.
Yeah, you get two badges, or maybe, I don't know, three, but you will definitely get your citizen badge. If not, call the mayor and I will make sure you do. But thank you all for being here and a wonderful lesson this evening in city government, and we thank all of you for being here and making your commentary and staying this late. So thank you, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you, I know, me too, me too. I'm going to, yeah.
Mr. Villanueva?
Where are we, man?
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 Can someone grab the mayor?
Where are we, man?
Where are we, man?
Where are we, man?
Item six, appointments by the mayor. Where's my cavalry? Call to order. Okay, item six, appointments by the mayor. We have Cultural Arts Commission, Emily Fretwell is their motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Emily. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests, there are none. Item eight, announcements by the mayor. I have an announcement. The MR 340, sponsored by Missouri American Water, an event where they travel 340 miles of the Missouri River, is coming this Tuesday, July 24th, on the Missouri River out of Kansas City. So they will reach Jefferson City on Wednesday, early morning of July 25th. I know that that's always something we enjoy, welcoming the boaters as they come through. They're not called boaters, what are they?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Where they're going to be at?
At Wilson Serenity Point.
Down by the what?
Oh!
Oh!
Carlos!
Down by the river!
Down by the river, Jeff City Mo. All right, Carlos. That's where they're going to be at? Good one. Wow. All right, Carlos, we'll see you there. All right. So I cannot be there. If anybody can welcome them that morning, that would be great, on Wednesday. I'm going to Florida to see, yeah, I'm going to be going to see Rod Stewart in Florida, so I'm busy. If you could be, Carlos is the man. Carlos is going to welcome them down by the river, along with Ken Hesse, and I know that Councilman Mahalovich is very involved in the river, so I'll expect you to be there as well. So that is Wednesday, the 25th, in the morning, whenever we have a time, usually if we get closer, as they get closer, but I think it's the morning, Steve can let us know. And that's all my announcements. Oh, and vote in August, Tuesday, August, gosh, 7th, thank you. Vote. All right, item, okay, any other announcements? Mr. Sanders?
Since I let the cat out of the bag about one possible grant we feel very good about, we have a second Historic Preservation Grant that we applied for. It's to do archaeological study down in the West Main area. That'd be a $13,800 grant, and we do have the funds gleaned from our personnel budget to match that for about $9,200. So the cat's somewhere running around, but I just thought I'd announce that, too, since they're both kind of going in tandem.
Okay, I'm allergic to cats, but that's fine.
Okay.
We'll get it.
We'll, we'll.
So is Carlos. But anyway, thank you. One other announcement, there's a budget meeting. Do you want to announce that one? It's the 23rd.
Yes, starting Monday here, at, I believe, 5:30.
Yes, Monday, the 23rd, at 5:30, our first budget meeting.
In chambers.
Here, yes. Any other announcements? Item nine, Lincoln University, Carolyn was here for about the first three hours, she left. Anything from Lincoln, any announcements at the moment? Item 10, presentations from the gallery, nobody's signed up. Item 11, consent agenda is their motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2018-26.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November 1, 2017, through October 31, 2018.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This grant is through MoDOT, would cover up to 50% of our costs for the contract tower, and that's usually personnel and utilities. Have to answer any questions.
No questions? All right, item 27.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fares charged by the transit system to include a single-day pass.
Mr. Marash?
This screw out of the trial program we conducted with LU for a universal ride pass, and to complete it, to make it ongoing with Lincoln, as well as any other interested parties. We'd need to modify the code, and have to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Bill's pending. We took up item A, so item B, number 22.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Turtle Creek Subdivision, Section 2, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders? Oh, I'm sorry.
It is closely associated with the next bill as well.
Okay, so you're doing both, then?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll read number 23 as well.
An ordinance amending Section 19-401 Streets and Highways Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to portions of Ronan Court and Rider Court located in Turtle Creek Subdivision.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would approve the final subdivision plat for Turtle Creek, Section 2, Bill number 22, and then Bill number 23 would approve the parking plan associated with that. Up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted. So Section 1 of this subdivision was approved back in 2016, and consisted of 39 lots, as the developed portion right there, so the photo does not show that being developed out, but there has since been a number of homes built there. In fact, the subdivision is just about built out. So the developers proceeding with Section 2 and the final phase of the subdivision on the area highlighted on the screen, would consist of 41 lots, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this plat at their June 14th meeting on a vote of 8 to 0. And then the parking plan associated with the plat is shown up on the screen with the sides of the street highlighted in green, where parking would be permitted, and so the bill would prohibit parking on the opposite side of those streets. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, we'll do roll call on 22.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Now we will have roll call on 23.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 24.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Syntec and Associates for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Marash?
Clerk indicated it's a maintenance contract with Syntec. It was bid out, and based on past usage, and as you can see, the award is recommended for Syntec.
Any questions? Councilman Hesse?
I just have a 20-part question, no, I'm kidding.
Bring it on.
I move to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal, no resolutions, no presentations, no discussion. Is there discussion? Item 18, any new business? We have item A, Charter Review Advisory Committee Extension. Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. Early last week, I distributed to the city council a staff report which sets forth some of the recommended changes that the Charter Review Advisory Committee is going to forward, or has forwarded to the city council. As part of that staff review, I informed the council that the Charter Review Advisory Committee has asked for a 60-day extension to continue to look at just Section 6.2 of the charter relating to parks. I am forwarding that request on to the city council here. The resolution that established the Charter Review Advisory Committee provides that extensions may be provided by motion.
So do we have a motion for that extension request? Any further discussion? Do we need roll call? Probably.
No.
No, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So motion passes for their extension. Item 19, any unfinished business? Item 20, motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. All right, good night, everybody. Good night.